It is seven thirty. Recording has started. We will call to order the January twenty seventh Town Council meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, to kick the night off here, we have a few announcements. Uh, continuing announcement here. The Heritage Cultural Center is closed, uh, but on February fourteenth, it will be reopening. Uh, it's closed in the meantime because it's receiving some extra cleaning, organizing and a refresh of the displays. Please join us at the town Saturday, February eighth for cookie decorating classes led by Jamie Wadowski, the calling crazy cookie later herself. The registration link is on the town website if you are interested. The town McCandless is seeking applicants for personnel zoning and industrial development boards to apply. Fill out applications on our website or mail them in, hand over them to the town McCandless. The deadline to apply is this Thursday, January thirtieth at five P M. Uh, another item, uh, to announce is the town has under agreement, um, a new police K nine. Uh, we were saddened by the passing of Officer K nine Officer Serrily, however, working with Officer Davis, who I think, uh, is here in the back. Sorry, I didn't see there. Um, we had, uh, an opportunity to, uh, acquire another K nine officer. And I'm glad to announce that the town has entered into agreement to make that happen. So we appreciate that. Um, our fellow councilwoman has also more to add.
Sure. Um, working with retired Sergeant K nine Sergeant Madden, Brian Madden, um, we all remember, um, K nine Officer Joy. Um, he and, uh, some neighbors of ours in the town have started a GoFundMe page to help raise the funds that will be required for the support and training of this K nine. Um, we can all, I'm sure this Officer Davis can tell us how, how much hard work and time is involved in training a K nine officer. Um, so if I will make sure that information gets sent to our town website. And also if any residents would like to contribute to this directly, you can also send a check to the town of McCandless and just note in the memo, K nine, we'll make sure it goes to the right place. We appreciate the community support.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, just to add to, uh, the K nine, it is a dual purpose narcotics and patrol K nine. Um, I don't know a timeline for that, uh, when we will arrive. I'm sure there will be training with Officer Davis, et cetera. Um, and probably the, the number one thing is, uh, preliminary name of Leroy will be the K nine's name. So wanted to announce that. Uh, last little announcements, uh, the town would like to introduce the new code enforcement officer, Zach Paris. So Zach, if you can just come on up and introduce yourself and say hi.
Councilman, my name's Zach. Happy to be in the new code enforcement officer of the town McCandless. Um, I've served with the volunteer fire department in Shaler and McCandless for approximately six years totaling between both departments. Um, very happy and ready to serve this town, so. Really happy to have you aboard. Thank you, sir. Zach's been a great addition so far. He fits right in with the group. It's like he's been here for a year already, so.
Great news. Thank you very much. Welcome to the town. Uh, at this time, we will hold a public, is there, I'm sorry, are there any more announcements from anyone else on council? Nope. Uh, at this time, we will hold a public hearing on a proposed ordinance for grading. I will turn the meeting over to Steve.
President Singer, um, at this time, I would call to order the public hearing regarding proposed ordinance number fifteen fifty-four. An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of McCandless, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, to repeal and replace part seventeen, Article seventeen oh five, grading, excavation and fills of the codified ordinances of the town of McCandless to regulate grading, excavation and fill activity within the town. Um, first we'll have RJ, who is going to put on a very informative presentation. I, I learned a little bit when I read it in packet that I, that I must have missed when I reviewed the ordinance, but, um, and then after RJ is finished, members of council, if you have questions you can ask, and then we'll open up for public comments at that. Okay? RJ, take it away.
Good stuff. All right. You know, if you give me a chance to make a fun PowerPoint, I'm going to take that opportunity. Um, we won't be here too long, but I do think that this is a really good thing to talk about because, um, making sure I know how to work the PowerPoint, um, because this is one of the, you know, three big ordinances that we've done. Either a really significant re- rethink of or total repeal replace. Um, so back in twenty twenty-two, we did the, you know, significant amendment of the stormwater management code. Of course, in twenty twenty-three, we finished the zoning ordinance rewrite and also the subdivision land development ordinance, which was a part of that. That was a year and a half long project. Um, and kind of in the background, we were keeping an eye on this grading ordinance because all of these ordinances work together to regulate development design as a whole. Um, so this was the last one that really needed a facelift, let's call it. Um, so I, I think, what was it, Steve, forty years, the forty or fifty that this one hadn't really gotten a reboot as well? Yeah. So we, we're looking at another fifty year old ordinance here. So what does a grading ordinance regulate? Um, big one, when a permit is required to do grading or excavation, what exactly those thresholds are in the first place to call it, you know, worthy of a permit? What needs to be submitted for review? Uh, what types of slopes are allowed where they can be created? You know, making sure that we're not touching anything that is landslide prone or too steep. Uh, and also keeping an eye on, you know, are we doing it safely when we are touching a slope that is safe to be graded in the first place? Um, what you can use is fill clean. That's the answer to that. Um, and when inspections for this type of work are required and how you need to take care of your construction site. So we kind of touched on this at the very beginning. Why are we updating this now? Uh, first of all, this is really the main issue. More clarity in when a permit is required. The current grading ordinance just says when you're doing something that is more than normal landscaping work. What is that lovely question? The ordinance does not give us a standard, so it's almost entirely based on, you know, an educated opinion, but an opinion. Um, and that's not how we want to regulate when we're requiring people to, you know, put the time, effort and money into improving their property. We don't want to regulate on an opinion. Um, so as part of implementing more clear permit requirements, we separated the types that you can have into a minor and a major permit. Um, different review tracks that have different levels of, you know, intensity, different levels of keeping an eye on, on certain things so that it's not so burdensome versus, you know, we're keeping things appropriately safe. And we'll get into that in a minute. Um, better organization of information with administrative design requirements. There's a flow to this new ordinance, again, even for the information that wasn't new. Um, just organizing it so that if somebody is coming in and saying, okay, when do I need a permit? Well, am I exempt for this? Oh, I'm not? Okay. Well, then what do I have to do to submit this permit? It all flows. So the way that somebody might approach a project, the information shows up, you know, in that order. Um, consistency with new zoning and development codes, that's just pulling together all the language, things like talking about buffer yards. There were references to types of buffer yards that are simply no longer in existence in the new zoning code. They have equivalents, but they have different names. And so we want to make sure those match. So there's clarity. Um, and also this is another big change, sending appeals of grading decisions to the code appeals board, which must be staffed by construction professionals. Previously, it was just kind of a vague requirement to send it to town council. Uh, that's never actually happened, at least that I'm aware of, but the people that would be looking at these, um, appeals are a designated appeal board and they have experience in construction and design as a requirement of being on that board. So looking at the minor grading permit side, um, just some, some different numbers on here. I'm not going to read this whole slide, but we chose the cutoff points that we did because five thousand square feet of earth disturbance is quite a large project. I mean, you're looking at like you'd, you'd be doing basically a new single family home, um, at that point, which has other, you know, review triggers for things like stormwater where you'd be looking at this stuff anyway. Um, the cutoff to where it bumps up into the major permit, that's when you have to start looking at N P D E S requirements. That's, um, you know, erosion sediment controls, things that are sort of in the bigger stormwater review bucket. Um, also whether you are raising the ground surface or lowering it, that's, um, fill or cut, you have to add more than four feet in depth or take away more than four feet. Um, as well as meeting that size requirement. And there are exemptions for several things that are appropriate in the ordinance, but one of the big ones for, you know, when you're thinking of these permits that fall into the minor category, um, you might look at, you know, excavation or backfill for a new foundation, a basement, a pool, something where you actually have a flat grade, but you'd be digging down that far. Those are exempt because those things are reviewed already under a building permit. Moving on to the major grading permit, this is more of what we actually have in place, but again, not with really these sort of hard um, checkpoints for why things are being reviewed, projects with at least a fourth of an acre of earth disturbance, more than four feet of cut or fill. Um, or retaining walls more than four feet high, again, something that normally triggers a building permit. Um, and projects that otherwise meet the requirements for a minor grading permit, but we determined in our review could pose a hazard, maybe a slope that supports a town road. So we need to take a more intensive look at what's going on there, even if otherwise it wouldn't fall into the major category. These are just a couple of exemption examples. Um, again, there are more, uh, that, you know, makes sense in the context of normal activities, but farming, that's a big one. State law regulates a lot of the agricultural stuff. We don't get to have much of an opinion on that. Um, leveling part of a yard by a few feet. I threw this one in there because I imagine as a homeowner, that would be my first question. If I want to level out my yard a little bit, am I going to have to do this minor grading permit thing now? The five thousand square feet of earth disturbance plus how high you'd have to change the grade to, to fall into that minor permit category? You'd have to be putting in like several feet over a large span of your yard to even begin to trigger that permit requirement. So for the most part, those basic landscaping things are not going to trigger this. Um, wells, tunnels, public projects, utilities, test excavations, things that are part of infrastructure and development needs that are very, you know, typical course run a mill. Those are not going to trigger a whole entire permit requirement. Um, and also we use the requirements in the grading and excavation ordinance to review land development applications. So if you already have a properly issued, you know, reviewed by the town engineer, et cetera, land development application, we're not going to make you pull another permit because you've already done the review work and paid those fees. So comparing the review requirements between minor and major grading, the big thing about the minor grading permit, this is kind of something new that we're doing, you know, not something that you see necessarily um, in a lot of model ordinances, but it was to address concerns and comments that we get where people are wiping out, you know, all the vegetation on their lot. There's no erosion and sediment, you know, controls. If we didn't have a permit requirement to trigger anything, we didn't really have the opportunity to look at things like that. So that's why we implemented this minor grading permit. It doesn't require a licensed design professional to prepare the plans. Um, the requirements are really focused on, are you making slopes that match, you know, our general grading permit requirements? Um, and just making sure that, you know, nobody's getting too wacky out there without a little bit of eyes on it. Um, our intention is that this can be reviewed in-house by the town inspectors with a little bit of training on how to look at typographic maps. Um, erosion and sediment control. Again, these are things that kind of typically come up in a building permit review anyway. Um, on the major side, again, this is already what the permit requirements are triggering as it stands now. Um, licensed design professional, engineer, surveyor, landscape architect, full stormwater management plan, the town engineer reviews it with a review escrow, and we may require a development agreement and bonding depending on how extensive the work is. This is really how much, if you're doing enough work, that it almost looks like it's in the context of a land development application, but maybe you wouldn't have actually been building a structure or doing something that would have otherwise triggered a full land development application. We're catching that intensity of project in the major grading permit side. Also, I wanted to touch on some of the things that are staying the same because it is a totally, you know, repealed or replaced ordinance, but that doesn't mean that we wrote the whole thing completely. Um, the new ordinance is not more restrictive in terms of how steep a slope can be. We actually have a pretty conservative ordinance already. Um, would have been difficult to get tighter than that off the bat. Uh, buffer plantings, those are also just as strict as they used to be, but the, as I mentioned before, changing the language so that it matches the types of definitions in the new subdivision and land development code, so we can correctly reference that. Still can't blast with dynamite, but now we're regulating this over here in the grading and excavation ordinance instead of the zoning code where it would have been theoretically subjected to an opportunity to apply to the zoning hearing board for variance. So we wanted to get this back in the discretionary design review codes that, you know, come under council and a construction board. Um, and also procedures for requesting waivers and those design modifications are the same, but now the language between the stormwater management ordinance, the saldo and the grading ordinance is all going to be the same. So it's recognized as, you know, the same type of process, uses the same type of terms, easier for people to follow when we talk about it. And this is the important one because we don't want to do anything if it doesn't actually benefit the community, right? Um, big one, more design options for property. When we talk about permits that are triggered by retaining walls that are over four feet, you actually I do not want to reboot my computer right now. We're good. I T was just really enthusiastic about rebooting for a second there. Um, so you could not make a retaining wall before, uh, taller than four feet in the old grading ordinance. Now, in the zoning code, we actually bumped that up to up to ten feet if it supports a properly reviewed slope change. Um, and we were getting variances for this before we redid the zoning code. So, you know, that wasn't really a good way to ban it if that was what we wanted. And we did find sometimes we needed taller retaining walls to support things like sidewalks. The town council really wanted to see happening in developments that had steep slopes in the front. So we were kind of shooting ourselves in the foot there. Um, so in the new code, yes, you can go taller than four feet, but proper engineering review will ensure that, that will ensure that this stays safe. Again, that's going to fall into the major permit requirement. So you're not getting out with that design unless the town engineer has actually looked at it. Um, better assurance that landscaping work that's going on around your neighborhood is actually safe, not going to cause a landslide or anything else undesirable. Um, consistency in when permits are required for residents' own work. Again, if the current permit requirement is kind of subjective, that doesn't really tell people, you know, what they can expect, how they can plan ahead for whether they need to account for permitting costs. Um, and at least in my opinion, I hope everyone else agrees, the regulations are just plain easier to read. We took the legalese out as much as we could. We tried to make it flow the way that somebody would think about approaching a project, um, so that they can at least make an informed decision about whether they want to invest in something that requires more professional design rather than what we do see sometimes, which is you get halfway through the work. Um, find out that you need a permit. You've already invested this much money, but maybe the project is more expensive than you would have chosen to do had you known upfront. So the idea is that you're able to make a more informed decision from the beginning. Think that's the end. Yeah, it's not giving me another slide. So I think we made it through the PowerPoint. If anyone has any questions on town council, I'm happy to answer them.
Have you determined costs yet for the permitting?
So that's something that we're looking at doing at the same time that we would potentially be passing this ordinance. Roughly speaking, I'm thinking maybe the minor permit cost could be around a hundred and fifty dollars. The thing, maybe two hundred. Thinking behind that is we usually ballpark staff time at about fifty bucks an hour. Um, and we're thinking that these should be able to be reviewed and administered within a handful of hours. Also, that matches the, um, simple subdivision application fee. And since that is the more simple, for lack of a better word, more minor, um, activity on the land development side, it kind of makes sense to make those permit fees match. Still turning over a little bit what to do on the, the major side. Um, the minimum fee for a major subdivision and land development is a thousand dollars. That feels a little bit steep for something that probably is mostly going to happen in outside of the context of land development, because if you're all, that's, you know, an exemption. If you've already paid that fee, um, maybe somewhere closer to, you know, between six to eight hundred would be more appropriate. Uh, there is more administrative costs in terms of taking a review escrow, tracking all of that, working with the town consultants to make sure that all of the review is coordinated. There's a lot more people that are involved in um, a permit of that intensity, but that's something that we're still kind of thinking through a little bit, probably would make that proposal at the time the fee resolution is, um, updated, which is next, next month. Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, I have a question. You had mentioned in blasting, which isn't allowed with the town, was dealt with right now in the zoning code.
It was dealt with in the old zoning code. We intended to move it over into the grading code when we were done with the zoning ordinance.
So right now, what you're telling me is we don't have any regulations with regards to blasting in this in our area.
Not locally, however. It is also regulated by the state. It's not like somebody can just walk in here with dynamite and start blowing things up. You have to get a state permit no matter what. It's just an extra layer of protection that the town can say, no, you cannot blast here unless you have a really good reason that proves that this is a better plan than a plan that didn't have blasting in it.
The reason I asked that was because if the old zoning code dealt with this, my question is that we would have had to revise the new zoning code to reflect that blasting is being done in this grading ordinance.
Um, no, to be honest, I don't really understand why it was in the zoning code before, because this pertains much more to grading activation and construction. Kind of opened the door to a type of appeal that maybe is not the right form for it anyway with the zoning hearing board.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's fully integrated with our stormwater plan. You mean, you look to make sure there's no conflict.
Oh, yeah. So, um, actually there are a couple, uh, sections that point directly to the same requirements that we use to review our stormwater. Um, you know, anything that triggers the stormwater requirements based on the requirements that we put in here in terms of, um, the earth disturbance, you're going to have that stormwater review kick in at the same time as this grading regardless, um, but it does reference the same type of D P review standards.
Thank you.
Cool.
Any other questions from council? Thanks, RJ.
RJ, I want to say thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate it. As I did to read the ordinance and it was much more pleasant.
It was, I, I, and I have to say, you know, this was something that we had started right before we kicked off the zoning and saldo rewrite because we did see that there was a need with a couple of situations in the town, but I'm really glad that we ended up doing it after, because I feel like the skill set that we gained to be able to read, interpret and reorganize our own code was so great through that project that it, it resulted in a much better draft ordinance here than we would have had back then. So I think it all kind of fell into place nicely. Yeah.
Thank you, RJ.
Okay, um, are there any, uh, public comments or questions?
Ellen Wright, nine, six, three, five. Old Coomer Road, Allison Park, P A, one, five, one, O, one. I wish you the best for the new year. And along with that, I have a written statement here, so I'll try and look at you, but keep my place and my written statement at the same time. Okay, I know we're all busy and sometimes we miss something. In this instance, it looks like the notice for the public hearing was not advertised according to McCandless's code. McCandless code states that the public hearing for my hearing be in a newspaper, not more than ninety days and not less than two days prior to a hearing. Article one seventeen, section one seventeen point oh six. I looked at both last two Thursdays and yesterday's printed editions of the Pittsburgh Post Gazette. I did not see any public notice for this public hearing. When I looked online, I saw a public notice for the hearing. It seems that the public Pennsylvania municipality code now allows for electronic notice of public hearings. It's not clear to me what the public municipality code means by electronic notice. Does electronics mean email? Does it mean an online public notice? Or more importantly, is, has McCandless's code been modified to reflect the changes in the Pennsylvania municipality code? This confusion might be all right, though. Um, and it might be a good thing. Because McCandless's code is very clear, that prior to any public hearing to repeal and replace part seventeen, article one seven zero five, grading, excavation and fills is that the proposed ordinance needs to be reviewed by McCandless's planning commission. McCandless's code in article nine, section nine oh two, C, states under letter C duties, the planning commission shall have the following powers and duties. Roman numeral one, to review and to make recommendations to council with respect to all applications for changes in zoning districts, for subdivisions, approvals, for site plan approvals and for excavation permits. Two weeks ago, it was stated that the proposed ordinance was reviewed by RJ, Steve and Kelly from Gateway. And at the beginning, Jason provided in view, in, input. At the time, the town council meeting, there was no mention that planning commission reviewed this proposed ordinance. It appears that the proposed ordinance, number one, five, four, one, five, five, four, has not been reviewed by planning commission. I suggest that this public hearing be tabled to clarify McCandless's code is up to date regarding advertising public hearings and to give planning commission time to review the proposed ordinance, number one, five, five, four, to repeal and replace part seventeen, article one, seven, zero, five, grading, excavation and fills. So I haven't decided if I should call you Mr. Arlo or Doug, so I'm just going to go by first names here. Doug, Jack, Doug, Jack, Nick, Jason, Joe, Don and Patricia. In summary, I am asking to table this public hearing for two reasons. First, to confirm that the public notice for the meeting aligns with McCandless's code. And secondly, to give the planning commission time to review the proposed orange prior to the public hearing for this proposed grading, excavation and fill ordinance. Thank you.
RJ, could you come up to the microphone so everybody can hear? Who will make sure folks here are on recording?
Let me bring the ad, or at least the proof publication, which is what we take from the local extra north every time we place an ad. Yeah. So here's this, this is what this looks like. You get a run date. Here's the hearing ad. And this was sent out by me. It looks like I, uh, here we go, Tuesday, the fourteenth at two oh eight P M. And I will be happy to bring the ordinance draft to the planning commission on our February third meeting, fourth, whatever the Tuesday is next week.
I, I think the question that I have is simply this. What Ms. Wright brought up was that and you read a Roman numeral and had to do with the responsibilities of the planning commission, and that is to approve permits. Is that correct? Did I hear that correctly?
To, to review and to make recommendations for council, with respect to all applications for changes in excavation permits.
But that's a permit. That doesn't say with the ordinance.
But we're changing the requirements for the permit based on the ordinance.
I, I think the problem that I have with all this is that specific wording says that it's dealing with the permits and not the ordinance. The ordinance is the thing that's changing here.
So if you, which the permit will change based on the ordinance.
Again, the wording of where we are today. That's the planning commission will will review and make recommendations to council based upon the permit, correct? Is that what it says?
But the permit is based on the ordinance. RJ's just come through a thing that we're going to have a major permit and a minor permit. And so it's a change in the excavation permit, which is based in the ordinance.
It's a change in the process by which we issue a permit, correct?
Applications for changes in the excavation permits.
In the permits.
Based on what's in the code. We're going to have a major ordinance, a major permit.
I understand what you're saying. I just have a disagreement with the wording. Okay? I understand what you're saying, but.
I think just to keep things on track here, you know, since we're in a public hearing here, we'll take everything you said under advisement. We'll let our solicitor, our town manager and our planning director work through this. We'll let them take it from here. You know, if there's other public comment on, we're, we're arguing process right now about this and we'll make sure we review that as well. But the public hearing is more about the, the meat and potatoes inside of that. So that's if there's more comment, I don't want to take up your part of the meeting, but that's the point of the public hearing today for, for that. In the process, we'll continue to work through. Your comments have been noted. We'll make sure the advice with our solicitor as well.
Mr. President, if we're not taking action tonight, this is a public.
Correct. No vote will happen this evening. Thank you. We appreciate those comments.
Any other public comments to see? Okay, seeing none, the hearing is closed and we'll move on the agenda.
Okay, uh, with the public hearing being closed, now we can move on to public comment on agenda items. So if you have any comments on the agenda item, please come forward, state your name and address and you'll and you'll be granted up to five minutes to speak on those.
Hey, Ellen Wright, nine six three five, Old Coomer Road, Allison Park, PA, one five one oh one. I'm here to, the engineer's report that's listed on the agenda. And the engineer, they go through and they list all of their projects. They say what the title is. Not all of those projects have addresses connected with them. Now I've asked for the addresses and I've been told I didn't ask the right way. I'm a little bit confused how you can ask a wrong way for an address, but it appears I did. So I would like in the future that perhaps the engineer's report already includes the address. As so then it doesn't have to be asked for. I also asked for a copy of the form F P dash zero zero one, certification of clean fill. And I was told that neither the town nor Gateway has a copy of this clean fill form and that I have to go to D E P to get a copy of it. I, of course, was a little bit surprised that the town nor the engineer has a copy of this clean fill form. Let me read here again, instructions. Okay, both the person determining clean fill and use of the clean fill are responsible for maintaining copies of the complete form on site for a period of five years for department inspection. So I'm a little bit confused why neither the engineers nor the town have a copy of a form that's supposed to be on site for five years. I will go to D E P, but I would think that the town or the engineers would want to have a copy of these forms because they're certifying that there's no toxic fill being dumped into our landfill sites. I don't understand why the town doesn't have a copy of it, nor why the engineers have a copy of it. I can see you share my puzzlement. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment on agenda items? Come on forward, state your name and address.
Good evening. John Harrison, fourteen seventy-three, Hedwig Drive, Allison Park. The first one, under new business, you guys are going to be voting on not one, not two, not three, but four brand new police cars and then two brand new vehicles, which I'm assuming it should be Ford explorers, not four explorers. The question to is from a fiscal responsibility. Most, I'm not sure how many police cars we own in the district, I mean, in the town or how many of these other vehicles we own, but six vehicles seems to be an absorbent amount of vehicles to be purchased at one time for this small community. So I guess I need to have a little bit more explanation on, have we hired four new police officers and we need police cars for them? Have we hired two new people on the, in the community for the Ford explorers? So before you go and spend two hundred and sixty-two thousand six, two hundred and seventy, sixty-seven dollars and zero cents, I think that needs to be explained as far as where and why we're buying that many vehicles at one time. I know the school district, when they buy new buses, they buy them in small chunks. Now, they have a fleet of a hundred plus buses. So if I were to go and they buy ten buses at a time, which is ten percent. So if I go off of those numbers, the borough has sixty vehicles on their payroll. And I don't think we do. So I'm just questioning why we have such a large number of vehicles being purchased at this time. And then some of these other ordinances we want to change that are further down with giving less buffers, less areas and all of that. The rules are, again, I said it on the last meeting, the rules are put in place for a reason. I don't care what the adjacent property has. I don't care what the adjacent property is dealing with. What I care about is meeting what the expectations are of the rules that are in place. So why are we changing and cutting back on these? I don't care. It's the person who's building on the property. It's their responsibility and it's their problem to pay for. If it costs more money, that's not my problem. My problem is we have a problem in this community with green space and not having enough of it and having flooding and everything else. Every time there's a rainstorm, when you don't have that, that retention of whether it be plants or green space, we have flooding. If you want to see what happens, go up on the hill going up to, up to any, up to Nash. The new development is put in there. I don't know how many times there's been mud that's been washed out onto nineteen. Why does that happen? Because there is not the proper retention put in place to keep the washout. We see what's going on right now in California with get rid of all the, all the growth. It rains. What happens? You have mudslides. You have all these other problems. The stuff's there for a reason. Can't we abide by the rules we have in place instead of cutting back all the time?
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments this evening? Seeing none, we'll move into the prior meeting minutes. We're in your packets. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd like to recommend a change.
There's a motion. Let me get a second, then we can do the change. How's that?
I'll say.
Second, okay, and then an amendment?
On my McCandless Franklin Park ambulance authority report, I thanked Dr. Anchor Pury for his help with navigating the authority through COVID. And then I thanked Keith Hall for his service for helping us reorganize, restructure and reorganize.
So noted. Any other changes? There's been a motion and a second with an amendment. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Continue on administration finance reports. The finance report for the month of December, two thousand twenty-four. Trish.
Good evening, council. You had in your packet the checklist thing for December. Not anything of sincere note, just a wrap up of the year. Did anyone have any questions about individual expenditures?
There's no questions on the checklist and can we have a motion? Can you read the whole thing for me? I'm sorry. Look, just checklist, just checklist in part.
I moved to approve the checklist number twelve dated December first, two thousand twenty-four. December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, totally one million, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seventy-three dollars and forty-nine cents is submitted to each council, member of council and posted on the bulletin board on the town website.
There's been a motion for the checklist. Is there a second, Mr. Casey? Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Trish, please continue.
In addition to the checklist thing in the packet, you also received the December financial dashboard, revenues and expenditures for the general fund for December. These are the preliminary results consistent with prior years. You will see December again once we get through the thirty day accrual. We still are collecting some tax revenue from other agencies. That number will filter in as well as some of the last minute invoices for December. You can see currently we are at a hundred and three percent for budget for revenues and we are at ninety percent for expenditures. Very happy with the results and satisfied with that we will make budget. If anyone has any questions on the report, I'm happy to answer it at this time. But as a reminder, you will see this month again and an opportunity there. We ended December at the moment, and I believe we do have everything for this particular department. Snow and ice control was roughly seventy-six percent. I know everyone's wondering with all the numbers of callouts that we've had, currently we're at about twenty-three percent of budget for January to date. I'm comfortable at the moment that we will be fine getting through the snow season. But if, we will continue to monitor that and I will continue to report on that over the next month or so, at least until the snow comes off the ground. Does anyone else have any other questions on the revenue or expenditure report or the dashboard?
Just hope it doesn't snow next fall, next winter.
Exactly. As long as November and December are nice. Any other questions?
Thank you, Trish.
Thank you.
All right, continue on here. The communications report was in your packets. Any questions can be directed to John Badrowski or perhaps our town manager.
You stated at the beginning about the personnel board and other positions being available. They have not been posted on our Facebook page. I looked for them today. I am going to ask if they get posted on there because right now our Facebook page has five point four but fifty-four hundred people following where McMail only has four thousand. And once it goes on Facebook, it's easily linked to other people like McCandless type community pages that will get that. So I'm going to ask that we make sure all these positions are always posted on Facebook.
Can we extend it for another fifteen days with that? Heard it to do that?
Yeah, there's no, there's no set in stone deadlines. We could extend.
It just should be, it happened every single time this position.
Will we post and extend for fifteen days? Is that all right with everyone in council? I have no problems with making sure we have more than enough candidates, so. Anything else in communications report? Okay, junior council members report for the month of January. Yuki?
Unfortunately, there is no report for this month due to a lot of cancellations and midterm season. Everybody has been focused on a lot of academics and all really extracurricular events, but I look forward to reporting everything we do for the community for a month of February because I'm looking forward to everything we do that month. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you for coming.
It's been some time since we've had to go to remote learning. How, how did you find the quick shift this week? Where, where did you find the teachers and students able to accommodate and get back in that group again?
Yes, so the last time that I had remote learning was obviously during COVID. And at that time, we were doing a lot of Zoom meetings and like live sessions, but now we've transferred to something called FID days, which is flexible instruction days. So instead of live instruction, we just have asynchronous work that we have to do for each period. So it's much different and the transition isn't very difficult just because we're doing a few assignments just for basic and class throughout the day. So I don't really see us moving to that type of live instruction anymore, but if we did, I think it would be quite difficult. But as for now, because we only have a few cancellations, it's been good and everybody's been very, like, it's been smooth running with that process.
Yeah, I have another question.
Yes.
For you, last year Carson Corona spearheaded a very valuable program. And that was the Mothers Against Chump Driving Program, that was held up at the mall crash. Are there any plans to do that again this year?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not sure specifically about the mock crash, but I just talked to Trish about this, but I will also be spearheading some sort of initiative, most likely on some sort of green initiative, which is my focus. But if Carson would be interested in pursuing that, then I can definitely work with him to make that also happen. But for my project, I'm looking to do something more like green or sustainable for the township.
Thank you. Because it really, it really had a tremendous impact last year and they hadn't done it in three or four years.
I think the group that, that lives with and are having a meeting plans to contribute.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to keep in our public works crew to make sure the roads are solid and plowed, so you can go to school. Don't worry. That's what I tell my nine-year-old daughter. She hates me for it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Continuing on liaison reports, M I D A, Mr. Arlo.
There was no meeting this past month.
Okay. North Hills Council of Governments, that's myself. This would be in regards to the December meeting. We actually had it remote because of snow. The topic on everyone's mind, I think I say this every time, is salt, salt, salt. So cog is, cog is used for many different things. A lot of the smaller municipalities use it for bidding processes, things that affect, thankfully, we do some of our own house bidding here. We have that ability to do so. But we do value from a lot of things with the North Hills cog, salt purchasing is one. So we do get a very nice discount purchasing with all of our other members. That's one of the major things going on right now, so. Any other comments for cog? Okay, at this time, are there any public comment on, excuse me, administration and finance? Seeing none, we'll continue on to planning and zoning reports, the planners directors report for the month of January. RJ?
So sorry, you get a lot of me tonight. We've been busy. So we have a couple of different items that were at the planning commission as well as some administrative items and things we are bringing to the planning commission with your approval. So we'll get right into it. Reorganization, Dan Corden remains the chair. Ann Clark remains the vice chair. They reorganize at the beginning of every year, elected the same officials that they had near prior. Walnut Court Phase Two, this one had a continued review at the last planning commission meeting. They found a way to get twenty feet of frontage on that cul-de-sac with some very creative lot lines that were certainly not the intent of the new code to allow, be that as it may. The language was in their favor. We'll get to that later. But in the meantime, dealing with this at the meeting, that if you recall, previously, the question on the table was they have this, you know, two-car-wide private drive driveway that they want to have access each of the townhomes, garages, which are front-loaded, coming off perpendicular from the existing cul-de-sac of phase one. Working with the fact there's already some infrastructure there that, you know, had they been able to acquire the last property at the time, none of this would have been a problem, but it is, so here we are. We did not necessarily think that that private drive was going to be able to be approved without a modification request had they not been able to get very creative with these lot lines. So given that our two options are to allow them, because there's not really anything in the code that says that you can't right now, to make L and horseshoe shaped lots that run all over this residual parcel to still achieve the frontage required by the code or to allow them to subdivide them more normally along the private drive as a lot would typically be laid out on a street. The planning commission is now contemplating whether that is actually an equal to, or in this case, better result than getting the exact same development with absurdly shaped lots. So there was pretty extensive discussion about how to tweak the code to make sure that we actually really ban that. Like I said, we'll get to that later in the report. We have a good definition on deck that we could, you know, toss to them as an amendment as soon as next week, since it sounds like we have a couple amendments to go over with them. But in the meantime, they asked the developer to go ahead and redraw those parcel boundaries to be what they would actually be approving, assuming this modification request is recommended and then approved by council. And I've, I've seen the plan. They, you know, got some feedback from me to try to create lots that were the most sensible, had a rear yard without a very long front yard, because that was also something being discussed. I think it looks like it's the most functional, you know, version that it could be, but obviously the planning commission gets the chance to review that and have an opinion next week as well. That may be coming to town council at the end of February. Not sure yet. Just depends on if it gets out of the planning commission, but right now the action deadline is March. Carolene Apartments, we have this one on the agenda tonight. This one was mostly done in the December meeting, actually, but they just had a couple more cleanup items. This is the last lot or second to last lot, I should say, in the McCandless Crossing, previously master plan development. Planning Commission recommended its approval contingent on all of the engineers' comments, you know, from their, their latest review letters being addressed, which is the typical way that we handle things like that when there are third-party approvals, things like that. There are three modification requests on the docket for this one. Two of them are really kind of the same issue, but because it's addressed in two different ways in the code, just to be safe, we're putting it on both ways. So this, this two-in-one issue is the side buffer yard. So we call for at least fifteen feet of buffering at either the perimeter of a commercial or mixed-use property or the perimeter of a parking lot or both, when those are one in the same. The existing neighbor to this property, which is the Remington, previously. Um, the existing neighbor to this property, which is the Remington, previously, I think Anthology, you know, it's gone through a couple of name changes since it was built. But they already have a ten-foot buffer, which was the standard at the time that McCandless Crossing was master planned. Um, so the applicant is proposing to have a ten-foot buffer at both the property line and the perimeter of the parking lot in order to allow them to work, one, work around some water lines, you know, on the other side um of the building towards where the entry in Kerry Lane comes in. But also because it's already functionally exceeding what our code would require at fifteen feet. The functional buffer between the two properties will be twenty feet. And the buffer codes are written, assuming that you don't necessarily know what's on the other side. It could be a house, you know. So that's why that is in the saldo, because if there is an equal to or better result than the code is written in a vacuum, you have the discretion to approve that. Um, planning commission recommended that both of those be approved. One doesn't really work without the other. The other one um is regarding the sidewalk. So this property, actually, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna screen share. This will make it easier. This property is bounded technically by McKnight Road. But not necessarily fronting on McKnight Road. Um, so if we can, perfect, okay. Can we see my mouse? Not really.
Yeah.
Let's try it. There we go. All right, great. So this right here is Duncan Avenue. This is the regional stormwater facility from McCandless Crossing back here, which is why the grade lines drop off so steeply at the edge here. This is basically where the tree line is right now. So this is Duncan and it wraps around to Kerry Lane, which is a appropriately designed but private street that accesses Remington Anthology, et cetera, over here. McKnight Road is over here. It's a bit unusual to not have had this cut out and have its own property line. Wasn't here when that happened. I assumed that it made more sense with the code at the time. Um, but functionally, what we have is a property that has to front physically on Kerry Lane. Because that is a protected access easement and road for the Remington already over here. But their property line is on McKnight Road and the code requirement triggers at the property line, not a functional interior road necessarily. So there's, they, they've going, they're going to, um, or at least they're proposing anyway, you know, to put this perimeter buffer planting here rather than put the sidewalk right on McKnight. And to finish, the sidewalk on Kerry Lane, I believe stops right around here right now. So there's just a stub and then nothing before you get to the Remington. They are asking to construct the sidewalk through the property here. And then here's the other side of it that connects into the Remington, rather than connect the sidewalk on McKnight, which would not connect to any existing pedestrian facilities. In this alternate proposal, it would finish the connection all the way around from the Duncan Avenue intersection to get into the development all the way to the Remington. So this achieves the spirit of the code and it also establishes a pedestrian connection that does not exist right now. Whereas the code is written, would not necessarily do either of those things. Um, so the planning commission did recommend this one as well for approval. And I already mentioned that they recommended the whole development for approval. So that is on the agenda tonight. You do not have to necessarily vote on it until, I believe, next month's second meeting is when the deadline for the application would be. Whether it is available for your vote tonight, should you be ready to take one? Getting back to the, did anyone have any questions on those before I move on?
If they put the buffer in along McKnight and Southwest Planning Commission comes along and decides that they're gonna help us build sidewalks on McKnight Road, will the buffer be in the way?
I don't know, because I'm not sure what that would look like. It could be, but I don't know that necessarily they'd want to put that sidewalk directly against McKnight Road. Since that's a pretty high-speed area of travel, I imagine they'd want to bump it back closer to Kerry Lane anyway, just on the other side.
Okay, well, I think you should at least consider what could happen in the future. Number two is, I think the expense of putting a sidewalk on McKnight would be significantly more than Kerry Lane.
I imagine so.
So can we get the difference in lieu of cash to build a sidewalk somewhere else?
Um, I, I don't have that number off, you know, just off the cuff, but I think that that's definitely something that the town engineer could work with the applicant to develop. You know, what would the quantities have been? And the reason for the difference would be that, of course, McKnight is a state road, so you're gonna need to pull a highway occupancy permit. Potentially, the construction standards are going to be more arduous um than on a low-volume lane. Um, so yeah, that's, that's definitely something that we could work with them on.
Lane really just benefits their residents.
Well, I mean, it does connect to the Remington. I don't know that I'd say that it only benefits.
Primary.
I guess, I, it, it connects, it connects to an existing property that does not have a pedestrian connection right now. So. Thank you. I'm sorry. I, I was just thinking of the modifications, but I'm glad that you brought that up. Okay. So yes, that's also another one, uh, another motion on the agenda in this, you know, group of motions related to Kerry Lane. So the developer has requested to pay a fee in lieu of constructing a parklet, uh, you know, open space recreation area. Something like that on the property. Um, we did change our code when we repealed and replaced the zoning in Saldo. Um, before the developer could just elect to pay the fee in lieu. Now the developer must get actually, you know, an active approval from council to exercise the fee in lieu option. Um, the amount of that fee in lieu is set per unit by the master fee schedule. We have it set at eight hundred dollars, which I believe is two or three hundred than what we had before in the old code. Um, with forty residential units proposed, this would be a payment to the town of thirty-two thousand dollars that would have to be reserved to be used for recreation improvements somewhere else in the town. Um, again, it's, it's up to council. The way that we've seen the site plan, you know, they, they're pretty much using the entirety of the buildable area for the minimum parking requirements, the minimum pavement that they would have to put down for it. Um, and it's a pretty compact footprint, all things considered, for what this apartment building is. They're also running it right up to the tree line where the descent into the stormwater facility starts. So even though this is probably like a five-acre property-ish, there's really only one acre that's a buildable pad. And that was how McCandless Crossing was originally designed um before we had these types of requirements. That said, it is up to council to approve. So if we're not satisfied with the fee in lieu option, that's certainly something that we could send him back to the drawing board on.
I just want to note that is a significant increase from what we've seen in the past, because normally everyone would always pick the fee in lieu because it was so minimal.
Right.
It didn't make sense to do anything. So that's a significant amount for that unit.
We're also applying it to apartment buildings, which we had only had it applied specifically to like the single-family and duplex districts. Um, we weren't always able to apply it to multifamily. So this would be.
Wouldn't have even had a chance to exist.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, okay, we get on those developments before I move on?
Any other questions for a planning director? No? Okay.
Oh, yeah, sorry, there are a couple more. So it's a, it's a lengthy report. I apologize. Um, so coming back to the Walnut Court flag lot issue. Um, this is something that, again, we thought that we had gotten pretty well handled in the new code. But this is one of those things that uh we needed another definition on the zoning side to tighten it up and that was not there. So, um, this was something that the planning commission wanted to see turn around pretty quickly to get something back to them so that we can head this off, you know, for whatever the next plan is that comes in. Um, in consultation with the town attorney, we took a look at several different definitions of flag lots, which again are those sort of flagpoles with, you know, the lot, maybe it's accessed through like a skinny drive that just comes through this little leg that may meet the frontage of the street, but it doesn't really meet the intent of lot design of the code. Um, we have those addressed in the saldo, which again is the design modification side. So if there is a compelling reason why council feels that that design would be more advantageous to the needs of the town, you could discretionarily allow one. But the definition for what a flag lot exactly is should live in the zoning code, because we define different types of lots in the zoning code. So these two codes work together. Um, the definition in the report basically describes um a portion of a lot that abuts someone else's rear or side yard with their front yard. It's usually what you get with a flag lot condition. Um, and access by a narrow private road right of way or a driveway. This was again, something the planning commission really wanted to talk about was how multiple units could potentially be accessed or not by a driveway or a private lane. They were concerned about not having more control over that. So this proposed definition hits both of those while also keeping this in the design side of the code so that council has more control when appropriate to approve different types of plans. So if we have a head nod from the group here, I will take this to the meeting next week. That would still have to go through a public hearing and everything, but this is just for the discussion.
Kick the process off.
Yes.
It's fine with me to take it through the process.
Good, okay. I'm, I'm seeing heads nodding. This seems good. All right. Last thing that I wanted to do. Beginning of the new year, so it's always good to do a little bit of roundup of what we accomplished the year prior. And I do believe that you all would have had in your packet previously, the um not still screen sharing, am I? Okay, good. The annual report of the planning commission that hits all of the official actions taken. But there's some fun stuff that goes on in the administrative side too, or at least I like to think it's fun. So I wanted to go over a couple of things that we rolled out in this past year that, you know, I, I think it came up not at this meeting that I was at, but at the prior one, when we were talking about the grading ordinance, how do we get public information out about the requirement? Um, so this is one of our venues. This is brand new as of February of last year. Our comprehensive building and zoning permission, uh, permit submission guideline packet. Um, before the way that this was handled was there were a bunch of different individual requirement sheets that said, for a shed, you can be this close to the lot line and it can be this tall. For a fence, it can be this tall and you can have it here and you need this MTSA stamp. It was just a bunch of different sheets that all had to be individually maintained and only really had setback and height information and a little bit of info about what you had to submit with the building permit. Um, so with the advent of the new zoning code in Saldo, we wanted to do something a little more comprehensive that pulled together all of the requirements that you usually need to know about, no matter what type of permit you're submitting. So this is what we came up with. Um, it's got the three core residential district sheets at the end for easy referencing. So it hits all that setback information and height that was in there before, but it gathers together the required documents, what qualifies for a survey, basic things about stormwater review, floodplain information, making sure that you're not constructing in one and explains how we use tools to measure what your requirements are if you are near a stream or waterway. Um, and then construction inspect drawing information that pertains more to the building permit side, but what our inspector likes to see for each type of submittal. These are all gathered in this single document. Um, we were told by our website vendor in sort of a roundup meeting a couple of weeks ago that this is currently the fourth-most accessed document on the town website and it's only been live for eleven months. We had over twenty-three hundred downloads in that first year-ish of its life. So it seems like it's doing its job. I can always tell when somebody walks in with a very nicely arranged packet when, when they read this guide. So that's pretty exciting. Um, and we also rolled out a plan recording guidelines sheet. This goes out with every single subdivision approval letter um before that most of it, you know, was actually pulled from the county because they're the ones that ultimately allow you to record a subdivision. But in terms of people asking, okay, who do I have to drop this off to? Where does it need to go? Who needs to sign before I take it to the county? All of those things. Um, we were just explaining to people either verbally or by writing them emails over and over and over again. Um, obviously not very efficient and not great, because people can't look at the checklist and plan ahead. So this is something that we just launched a couple of months ago. It's available on the website all the time in addition to um going out with the subdivision approval letters. But just another new information delivery vehicle. Next on the horizon is a comprehensive subdivision and land development application. Again, we've got like five different forms that are all a little bit different. Have to be maintained individually and just are a bit out of date after the new code. So that's my next project, pulling those all together. And it should be on the website within the next couple of weeks. Any questions about those?
Thank you for all your hard work with all of that.
Thank you.
Cool. Very well done. Thank you. Uh, continue on the liaison reports, Mr. Arlo, planning commission?
The uh, the lot lines were quite, uh, they get quite creative, but they actually use the word gerrymandering. And uh, it was quite interesting, but yeah, the meeting manager impacted. If you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Uh, zoning hearing board, Ms. Clune?
Uh, there was no meeting in January or December, but there will be a meeting this coming.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, are there any public comments on planning and zoning? Seeing none, uh, we'll move on to recreation reports. Parks and Rec Director report for the month of January two thousand twenty-five. It is in your pack, Abby, would you like to? Listen, anything special?
I'm just here to say hello. Um, we do have a lot of exciting upcoming events happening this spring. So I've published everything that's on the books for January um through April, April thus far. Um, and we've had some great successes um in our programming already with uh selling out registrations. So I hope that that trend continues. So.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Uh, moving on to liaison reports, financial development professional committee, Mr. Hart.
Uh, we did not have a January meeting uh for the financial development uh committee. Due to the uh center being closed in January, uh, plan to start those up again in February.
Thank you very much. Uh, activities advisory ad hoc committee, Ms. Clune?
Yes, there was no meeting in January. Next meeting will be February twenty-seventh.
Thank you very much. Are there any public comments on the recreation? Seeing none, uh, the town manager report, uh, that report was in your packet. Anything to add to it, John?
Just highlight a few things. Uh, first, as you heard, Abby has a new title promoted to Parks and Recreation Director this last month. Just fantastic job. Uh, thank our finance team for a successful launch of the ADP payroll system. We switched that uh over the course of the end of the year and the beginning of this year and they did a great job on that. Uh, grants are still in progress. Uh, a new one that we worked on uh with Abby's help uh was a We Can Serve PA grant in conjunction with Land Force Pittsburgh for work on the Brant Trail. Public Works highlight nineteen snow call-outs thus far in January as of last Friday. Uh, thanks to those folks who come out in the winter and help keep us safe. Parks and Rec, uh, keep in mind, twenty-twenty-six is McCandless's one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth anniversary and we're gonna work on themes for the year and events. And coming up uh in the end of the first quarter and beginning of the second quarter will be strategic planning sessions for town council and staff department hits.
Great. Any questions for the town manager? Seeing none, uh, the engineers report was in your packets. Uh, I don't believe we have a representative here tonight, but any questions?
But I do have a question.
They can be directed towards John or towards.
I'm gonna direct him towards you.
Okay, but maybe I can answer for the engineer.
I, I saw in, in our, our check listings that we paid off the gentleman for his work down in Vestal Park Stream, the street.
Okay.
PRP project.
Okay.
My problem is, what's a PRP project supposed to do?
A PRP project is part of our MS four requirements with the state, which I'll speak to this unless you want to. Um, which are municipal storm sewer separations, a state mandate. Um, P R P stands for pollution reduction plan. The state, this was the second phase of the MS four requirements requiring pollution reduction in our streams. So our engineer um has worked to identify different stream valleys, uh, call them watersheds within our municipality. And we're required to remove so much sediment and phosphorus, I think, which is also removed with the sedimentation. Um, so we work with our engineer, we take feedback from residents and we highlight uh certain areas and certain watersheds that we can apply these projects. Um, the first couple were implemented years ago, um, some in Highland Valley, um, that's Lowry's Run Watershed. Um, we had previously done some work in Gertie's Run, uh, and we have a Pine Creek Watershed and a little Pine Creek Watershed. The ones you're referring to in Vestal are Pine Creek Watershed. Um, so a project that was identified with the township was an angvestal field. And in layman's terms, streams that run with the, the flooding conditions we have run hard and fast and they have a tendency to cut the banks, meaning they make them sheer wall. That uh sheer wall effect is taking the sediment from the sides of the streams and putting it in the bottom of the streams. It's actually eroding away the banks. So a pollution reduction project we, we do, which is a very high-value uh replacement for reducing sediment streams, is stream bank stabilization, which is what happened in that valley. Where we put out a bid contract with our engineer, they hired a low bid to come in and do mechanical means of laying those stream banks back and hardening that surface so that they no longer continue to erode. So that sediment in those banks are secure, that will no longer erode into the stream. It does not produce more sediment downstream for our neighbors in Millville and other areas. It helps to do that. So um, it sounds like uh we have finally made the final. So um, it sounds like uh, we have finally made the final payoff. Um, we do monitor that for twenty years. We're in agreement. Um, that's on the town. We typically work with that. We have done some in private project areas and some in public. Vestal was public, we own that property. But we're required to monitor and maintain that for twenty years as part of our MS four requirements.
My whole point.
That's a lot.
Yeah, my whole point is it's gonna fill up because when the state came in and rectified the problem on Pine Creek Road, they built a big long ditch through and no rip rap and it's just clay walls, it's collapsing. It's coming down the creek and filling in all that area that we just spent a boatload of money to, to build.
Unfortunately, Penn dot does not have to follow D E P requirements. Um, that's a process of the state and how they work. They are allowed to work outside of P A D E P. So we don't have a lot of say in what Penn dot can and can't do since that's a Penn dot road. Um, we can reach out to our state representative
I would.
in, in fact to them. And uh, see what we can do. I can tell you, uh, Kelly did do initial walkthroughs uh, over there to see preliminaries. Um, I'm sure if there is damage done, we can note that and take that back to our state reps.
Rectified before, there is damage done.
Understood. So I'll carry that as I'm sure our town manager will carry that forward to both Kelly at the gateway and to our state representatives and state centers.
Thank you.
Stormwater is a little bit of my background if you didn't catch. I know. Okay. Jack threw me off here a little. I, uh, that was the engineers report, uh, town attorney's report.
Yeah, I, I have no public report this evening, but we will have a, an executive session following the meeting to discuss personnel matters and to receive uh, legal advice from the town attorney. That's the end of my report.
Thanks, sir. Uh, there is no old business, which then brings us into new business. Uh, the first item up is four police vehicles and two administration vehicles. Uh, John, do you want to speak to this at all?
Uh, sure. This uh, request for six new vehicles and they are supposed to be Ford Explorers. That was a typo. Uh, four police interceptor vehicles would replace five uh, vehicles. So we're actually going to downsize the fleet whenever we make this purchase. We are replacing cars that are between ages, well, between twenty thirteen and twenty sixteen model years. So twelve to nine-year-old vehicles with over a hundred thousand miles. Uh, two patrol cars, one canine unit and uh, one undercover unit. Uh, keep in mind, out of those four vehicles, one of those is completely covered by an LSA grant that we achieved this year. We're gonna put that money towards the canine vehicle for its upfitting. On the administration side, those two vehicles, one is to replace a two thousand fifteen Chevy Tahoe with a hundred and ten plus thousand miles and the others to replace a two thousand thirteen Ford Taurus. Uh, ones for the building code official and the others for the administration department.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion out there?
Motion to approve purchase order six-two-six in the amount of two hundred sixty-two thousand, two hundred sixty-seven dollars for the purchase of four twenty-twenty-five police interceptor vehicles and two twenty-twenty-five Ford Explorers from Schultz Ford, Inc., under Co-Stars contract number thirteen dash E twenty-two dash two-four-one and contract number twenty-six dash E twenty-two dash one-eight-five.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Hi.
Second, Mr. George Jenny. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item number two is dealing with traffic devices. Uh, so this is regarding uh, anytime there are uh, traffic devices signs placed in right of ways, they come to council for approval. Uh, so the county has identified these areas in order for them to place them, we at council have to approve. Uh, so these are uh, the two intersections listed. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make it.
Go ahead, Mr. George Jenny.
Motion to adopt, adopt tentatively identified ordinance number one-five-five-two and ordinance in town council, the town of McCandless, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, amending part five of the town code of ordinances, traffic code to designate new stop sign intersections and to authorize the placement of new stop signs on Highland Road northbound and southbound at the intersection with Harmony Drive and to authorize the placement of new stop signs on Highland Road northbound and southbound at the intersection with Sweet Road.
Second, Ms. Clune. Uh, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, continuing on, we have uh, taken over of a road. Uh, this was Fassinger Farms Plan. This is basically saying we're going to take over that roadway as a town road. It was reviewed by the town engineer, meets all the specs, will take over the stormwater within the road and within the right of ways. Uh, is there a motion out there? Oh, go ahead.
I've got the bond, maintenance bond for this today, this morning, just wanted to put that on the record. I do have a question for the town attorney, sorry.
No, by all means.
We, so there was an additional bond from the loan contractor that we get requested because we wanted to ensure the top we presented by the public works department, but not the town engineer. So the contractor had agreed to give us extended twenty-four month bond for that. I have the draft of it. I do not have it in hand, although I have the developers.
That would be viable.
Okay, so up to you. What would you like to do with that? Um, I have no reason to expect we won't get it. We already have the draft that we just need to find the execution.
Yeah, we'll just have to say based upon the conditional receival of the final bond. Who wants to take that on?
Motion to adopt tentatively identified ordinance number one-five-five-three and ordinance of the town of McCandless accepting the dedication of the roadway identified as Burnview Court in the Fassinger Farms Plan number one, recorded in the plan book volume three oh nine page one sixty-two of the Allegheny County Department of Real Estate Records with the addition?
Of receipt?
Of receipt.
Of the top.
There has been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. George Jenny, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next up is Kerry Lane Apartments. Uh, these were the items RJ spoke to earlier. Uh, the first one up is the fee in lieu of, is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Hart.
Motion to approve the uh, public uh, recreation open space fee in lieu of payment quest set for thirty-two thousand dollars for the town's uh, master, current master fee resolution rate of forty uh, units times eight hundred dollars. Uh, motion, I'm sorry.
Hold there. There's been a motion. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Arlo. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next item is a waiver for the sidewalk along McKnight Road.
Did I ask if that's?
To another meeting or to, to, okay, yeah, then you could ask the table in advance.
Is there a representative here?
Um, my name is David Lucci. I'm from Victor Watts Associates. I'm here for Kerry Apartments. Um, you were questioning regarding the sidewalk. Is that what that?
Correct, yes. Mr. Casey, you have some questions by all means.
Yes, please.
If you build on McKnight, it's gonna cost you X plus. You build on Kerry, it's gonna be a lot less costly. I'm asking if you build a sidewalk on Kerry and you get a fee in lieu of the difference of what you would have spent if you put it on.
Well, I, I was here this, I was here uh, when you guys were talking about the sidewalk and I think there, the sidewalk could be put in if you want in the future along McKnight, uh, McKnight Road. Um, so I, I mean, we do have a buffer yard, buffer yard plan on there. We have some trees. Uh, we sent that plan to RJ. But I, I don't see the reason for that sidewalk because the sidewalk would be right next to the sidewalk that we're proposing along Kerry Lane. Am I, I'm not. I don't think I'm following.
Uh, what, what our councilman has asked this morning is he's saying with permitting potential construction cost to put a sidewalk along the full length of the property line of Bunting McKnight Road would probably be more expensive, although not connecting to a pedestrian facility. At least it would probably be more expensive. So he's not opposed to seeing the sidewalk constructed on Kerry Lane instead.
Correct.
Requesting that we consider to, to also put a condition of two million to make the difference. So like if you pay, I'm, I'm making a number up.
Yeah.
Ten thousand dollars more to construct a McKnight sidewalk. In addition to approving the modification, we put it on Kerry Lane instead. You all also pay us.
The additional amount that would be able to, to put the sidewalk along McKnight Road.
Yes.
The difference, the difference. Okay, yes. Yeah, I, I believe that that would be acceptable.
That would be
Okay.
If, that's.
The other part of that is the trees you wanna put in the buffer. You need to make sure that they wouldn't be where you would put a sidewalk in.
Um.
Or that they would be not large enough that it would inhibit a sidewalk in the future. I think that's how you want to sell it. Cause I think you may want the buffer for now, but something of, we don't want fifty-foot trees there later. See what I'm getting at?
I, I think, I think it's hard to
Is that?
Say it this time, just because this is and so the exact location and features of it, like I don't have it.
I would assume in your planning buffering plan, which is a requirement up there, we have certain tree and heights and things that affect. I'm assuming. Yeah, they're not gonna be fifty-foot deciduous trees.
Yeah, like the, the big circles and
Or trees, yeah.
Whereas this is usually what's, I mean, can you speak?
Arbor vitas, they're gonna be the arbor vitas, the ones that you, uh, we want a nice screen, you know, from the McKnight Road.
So I think it would be less of a concern in the future.
Stormwater?
It's my understanding that this stormwater design fits into the existing of the N T D S.
So Jack, do you, we need a motion with a conditional of the fee in lieu of the difference of cost between. So do you want to make that motion? I think you'll figure something.
It's motion to approve the public, the motion to approve the modification request number one for eleven eleven oh four point two zero three parentheses, A one to waive the requirement to construct the sidewalk along property line, a buddy McKnight Road applicant proposes to instead additional sidewalk connecting existing sidewalk on Kerry Lane to the neighboring Remington Drive and pay the additional in lieu of fee.
Why, why don't we say condition on paying the difference as a fee in lieu between the cross of the Kerry Lane sidewalk and McKnight sidewalk as reviewed and approved by the town engineer?
Perfect.
As she said. All right, there, there has been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Trish. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next one is dealing with
Yep.
Uh, buffer planting depths uh, as well. RJ, do you need to get any further? I think you described this a little earlier already. So. Yeah. Is there a motion to be made?
I have a question before we make a motion, if that's possible. And this keeps everything in line with the existing companies that are there that was built under the former zoning code. Is that correct?
I'll come up here. Sorry, I've been shouting from the table. Yes, um, this, the, the anthology Remington, et cetera, property was developed under the same zoning code that the original McCandless Crossing Master Plan occurred under.
So what has been asked for is actually to make the two property, properties uniform along the
Uh, yes, it's essentially a mirror.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Good, Mr. Hart.
Motion approved modification request number two uh, from eleven oh four uh, dot two eight zero D one to allow a buffer planting depth of ten feet code department fifteen on the north property line, abutting the Remington, abutting the Remington. Uh, applicant, applicant notes that the buffer depth of the neighboring property is ten feet, which would create a functional buffer planting depth of twenty feet total.
There has been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Arlo. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next item, uh, similar kind of thing for depth. Um, allow a parking lot perimeter planting area of ten feet uh, with a neighboring property ten, which again would be twenty. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. Modification request number three in section eleven oh four dash uh, two eighty subsection C two, to allow parking lot perimeter planting area depth of ten feet along the northern property line about around six. Applicant notes, there's buffer depth of the neighboring property, which is ten feet, which would create a functional parking lot perimeter, planning area depth of twenty feet.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. George Jenny. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the final one is the actual approval with the conditional use or with the condition set forth by the town engineer uh, for the apartments. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the land development application for the Kerry Lane apartments submitted by Triwood Enterprises. LLC located on vacant land on Kerry Lane adjacent to the Remington senior living. Contingent upon all items being addressed is identified in the planning and development staff report dated January twenty-three two thousand twenty-five. Town engineers review letter dated January twenty-three, two thousand twenty-five. And any other subsequent issue review letters.
There has been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Clune. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, are there any non-agenda comments from the public? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Can I make any comments on what just went down on those votes?
Sure.
Okay. Rules in place for a reason. We put the numbers in place for a reason. Why, why did we change it from ten to fifteen? If we're not gonna abide by the rules we put in place, why do it? We seem to continuously do this. We're not the only township that does this. Everybody downstream does it. And so ultimately, the people that live in Atona in Shaler and Lower Hampton all pay the consequences by that. Why can we not abide by the plans we put in place? We do it time and time and time and time again. Jason, you're the expert on water control. And it may only be five feet, but if it's a hundred feet long, that's five hundred square feet that you could absorb water in instead of letting it run off. We need to start working and thinking smarter and holding people accountable for what the rules that are in place. We don't seem to do that and I'm not sure why. So can we start doing that? Can we start answering those questions? I understand the hard questions to answer. And you want to try and appease everybody. But unfortunately, the person who's building the property, I'm guessing they don't live in the town. We do. We're the ones that are inheriting this. Our kids are inheriting this. The township ends up inheriting having to take care of the water retention ponds at some point. That'll cost money and those people that created the problems are long gone. If we haven't seen what goes on, the next time we get a heavy rain, please get out of your house. Get in, get in your car and drive to the get in, get in your car and drive to the low areas of the town and see what happens. See how the water rolls off the hills, and you have two inches of water rolling across the parking lot. It happens. But nobody's out there when it's raining because why? Who wants to be out there when it's raining? Nobody does. So we need to start living by the rules we put in place. If we don't do that, we're not doing anything better for the town. We're trying to improve the town. It's a great place to live. Why can't we abide by those rules? If we abide by those rules, we actually might be able to make it better. Imagine that. We made McCandless better than it is already. Please think about that on, in the future, when you guys are voting on stuff like this. And it may be that you could be a councilperson who's on your way out the door. You could be moving. But those of us that live here and are going to plan on retiring here and have been here for twenty years already, twenty-two years already, and I'd like to retire here and not have to sit there and see. I fortunately live on the top of a hill. If the water gets that deep where I live, we're all in one hell of a, we have a huge problem. But there's a lot of people that live in the valleys. And if we don't protect them, what are we doing? It's something very simple to do. The rules are put in place. Why don't we abide by them? Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Name and address.
Hi, Rita Martin, one oh five eight five Grubbs Road, Wexford. Yeah, just to comment about the thirty-two thousand dollars we're going to get in lieu of some open space and green space. I know in the new zoning rules, that was an option, but can't we please make them put in green space and not? It's, what does the money do in the end? It doesn't, it doesn't make McCandless better. I don't know what happens to that money, but it's not going. We should have a green space there, and it should be enforced. We need that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Name and address.
Kim Saff, eighty-nine seventy Eastview Drive. I don't know if anyone's aware, but Eastview is the road, like at the top of Sample, and it's incredibly difficult. I, I live on that road, and during rush hour traffic, trying to pull out of that road, whether you go at the top or the bottom, is literally impossible. When they opened, I guess that's, I don't even know what it is, but when they opened the road for pass event, the light changes and the traffic just flies. So I don't know if, you know, maybe they can do something with the lights to give you some time to pull out or put a mirror up or a stop sign somewhere. I don't know, but there's a lot of senior citizens on that street too. And it's an unbelievably dangerous situation, especially during rush hour. I just kind of closed my eyes and hold my breath and hope for the best. And it was never like that until they opened that road, so I'm not sure what they really looked at there. And I guess I would want to make another comment about the water too. I don't really know what's going on, but I have owned that house. I haven't lived in it since that long, but I have owned it since nineteen eighty-four. And I never had any water issues, never had a wet basement or anything. And then they built that housing plan behind the cemetery. You know, there's a cemetery behind the Eastview, and then they put like a very small housing plan back there. And ever since they did that, my house and several of the other neighbors, who it was always dry for thirty years, we, you know, I had to put in, I don't even know what, something to pull the water out. My basement was getting water, you know, it cost ten thousand dollars. It worked. But whatever they're doing to look at the water situation when they're putting these new housing plans, then they probably need to look at it a little closer.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we will adjourn into executive session, discuss personal matters and legal matters. May I have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.